Or what do I have to do?
Wi-Fi is so you're dead. So I push that one, right?
So you can hear it.
How are you doing?
You said for a week before.
No, that's true. I'm great. There's some paths, sunny hill and some paths. Actually, they turned it around. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you're up there. Right. I mean, if you hit on a hill.
In our neighborhood.
I know.
Hey, Charles. It's all well.
I'll be a dog. I'm talking very much. From that point, he's trying to walk away.
This one got off early in the morning. And we have moved this to buy. So what you thought there, you know, I think where I don't know. It's inserted on there. Yes, one coming there.
Probably not hearing anything. Yes, although it's always in your house. They started getting one eight and thirty. They're not here yet. So I'm just still okay with sending them. Don't probably hear any of this. Yeah, I only want to interact with the world. So they're not here to try not.
Yeah.
Well, they're there. Yeah, you need to want to get just it's my act. I had no idea. I'm not observing right now.
Yeah, I think so.
We're not being.
Right.
Because then they might get it. Thank God, and they're coral.
Sounds like you really got one.
Very good. I suppose. We need to look at all these. Have to read them out. Yeah. Yeah, I love it. I heard my crush. Yeah. Yeah.
You guys, it seems up here.
Yeah. I sort of dig out. You don't know what we're gonna do.
I can say.
I mean, maybe I hope. There.
Anybody simple. Sit here.
Guys want to make something.
Last one. Yeah.
So what do you think? We're all good enough. There's some stuff.
That's that.
So in your first one, it's that.
Is it on there? That's me. Chair.
I'm calling meeting order. I'd like Paul to lead us in pledge of allegiance, everyone. Let's do allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. The Republic of America, which has passed one limitation under God, individual, whether they come to law. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'll turn to my speaker on Saturday, you know what I mean?
Good thinking.
We know the exits, I believe, is the front door complete yet?
It is not.
It's not. So the only way out in an emergency is the rear door. It doesn't look like we have over a number of people here in the building today, so I think we're good. So we are doing a hybrid meeting, I believe, with some people on the Zoom. So we'll give them time to finish their comments when they're speaking. So we don't step on what their thought may be or whatever. We'll continue them, let them continue speaking on. I do see a lot of people here from Max Lane, and we don't have anything on the agenda tonight for Max Lane. Am I right? So I don't know if you're here just to watch and review, but there's no public here comment tonight. We have the minutes for June fifteen, twenty twenty-three, and June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to approve it? Can I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Motion passed. New business, we have Carl de Lorenzo's special use permit.
Scott, why don't we leave that to the end?
Okay, we can.
Is that right?
Yeah.
We're gonna save it to the.
Sorry. We're gonna save it to the end.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay. So we have some public hearings. So the first one is the village's PRD site plan. We've used as update plan circulated to the board. And potential actions in open public hearing tonight. So we would like you to come up and speak through his application. Come on, hit the first. Yep, my name is John Burris. I'm an attorney, Acotania man and writer in Newburgh, New York. I represent the applicant, the villagers in the Hudson Valley. Better known as Mark Sanderson. We're here tonight on a public hearing. And before we get into the site plan itself, just a little history for members of the public and, you know, and board. So what's being proposed is a planned residential retirement development. In February of twenty twenty-three, the town board approved a designation for this property. It authorized the change in the zoning map from R one half to a planned residential retirement development district property or PRRD. This allows development of a senior housing community, which Mr. Sanderson has been proposing for the past four years, but the PRD regulations were just implemented a couple of years ago. The uses that were approved by the town board in connection with the rezone include not more than a hundred ninety-seven independent dwelling units, including eighteen affordable housing. Again, these are for residents, have to be sixty-two years or older. In addition, there was an assisted living facility with no more than one hundred and nineteen beds, as well as an adult daycare center within that facility. So this use was, the property was rezoned and the uses were approved by the town board. The applicant is proposing two separate lots, one lot for the assisted living facility, one lot for the independent dwelling units. But according to your PRRD regulations, if there are separate lots, which it does permit, the approved plan is binding on all subject lots. So I just want to make sure people understand that even though there are two separate lots, all of any approvals and conditions are binding on both lots. And in fact, your regulations require any subsequent owners to be put on notice about these restrictions and binding obligations, and that's right in your regulations. So there are two separate lots, and my understanding of the reason for the two lots is we need to show the assisted living facility as a standalone zoning compliant lot in connection with its license application for the Department of Health. So that's why we want to keep that separate. In addition, the proposed concept plan, which you guys have reviewed as part of your recommendation to the town board, as well as your secret negative declaration, does not require any waivers or notices from your PRD regulations. It's completely zoning compliant. After the town board's authorization or approval in February of two thousand and twenty-three, we subsequently submitted a site plan application because that's the next step under your PRD regulations. Application was submitted in the spring of twenty twenty-three. I think you guys are pretty familiar with with the site. Again, the application's been hanging on and off for the last few years right now. But also wanted to note as a side that in addition to reviewing the PRD, the proposed senior community, this planning board approves the assisted living facility, the assisted use permit back in two thousand and twenty-one. The final site plan was signed. And the final approval was granted in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So a portion of what you are looking at is already been approved by the planning board. To date, according to those approvals, the applicant has made numerous improvements to the site, including the installation of a lot of critical public infrastructure. And I would just like to kind of summarize what the applicant, what Mark has done so far with respect to public infrastructure. He replaced the gravity sewer main from the existing cell storage facility to Mayor Drive approximately fourteen hundred linear feet. He repaired failing manholes and sewer lines. He also replaced the gravity sewer line on Mayor Drive approximately four hundred feet. And in addition, he replaced two hundred and fifty linear feet of a force main along Route nine. And finally, he replaced the broken hydrant along Apple Lane at the owners at his cost. So Mark has made substantial investment in improvements. A lot of these are public improvements, not specifically related or not just limited to his application. The cost in general is probably you're looking over a million dollars that he's already spent on infrastructure improvements. He's basically sunk his life savings into this project. He's committed to completing this project, the entire project. He has too much invested in this project. Um, he has too much invested in this project to just walk away. So I want you folks to understand he's in this for the long haul. As you may recall, the residents for the cottages are going to be leasing pad sites from him. He's not selling individual parcels. He cannot do that. He will be the landlord, leasing the pad sites to the individual residents of this community. The residents purchase the cottages from a manufacturer that is not related to Mark. The developer will charge a one-time infrastructure fee, um, and this fee covers the foundation and slab for the actual cottage. It covers, um, the finished grade to set the foundation in the slab. It covers the utilities that have to go from the road to the actual cottage itself. It covers the driveway, the walkway, uh, infrastructure that goes from the road to the cottage, as well as the landscaping around that cottage. Um, so whatever that the entrance fee is applied directly to that pad site. He will retain ownership of the property and essentially act as landlord. As I mentioned before about all the the current infrastructure and site work that's been going on at the site associated with the approved assisted living facility, you know, Mark or has had a contractor on site for quite a while now, and it's imperative that this contractor be able to continue to do the work. Uh, he's just about done with all the ALF-related infrastructure and site work. Probably looking at another week or two before the contractor runs out and the crew may dissent elsewhere. This is critical because especially with the retaining wall that has to come up and and be built, that if we lose this crew, we're not sure when they'll be able to come back. Um, that's why it's important to allow a limited amount of work to keep the contractor on site. Um, based upon workshop meeting last week, I think a couple of board members had noted that, you know, they don't want any further construction to take place at the site unless the license is obtained from the Department of Health. We all know that could take approximately eighteen months, could even take longer. And just so the board knows for their education that the actual application was electronically filed last night. Um, paper copies were submitted along with the submission fee of six thousand four hundred dollars, uh, were sent today. So the application has been filed. Um, and we look forward to pursuing that and 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 moving that as quickly as possible with the Department of Health. Unfortunately, again, we're looking at probably eighteen months before any license is issued. So therefore, you know, the site, based upon some of the board members' perspective, should be put on hold for approximately eighteen months, maybe two years. No work would take place despite all of the significant infrastructure improvements that have already been invested to date. We'd like to try to figure out a way to keep the contractor on site, allow some limited work pending the issuance of the ALF license. The applicant is open to any reasonable conditions. Um, the board is empowered to impose such conditions, but they have to be directly related and incidental to the proposed site plan as this is, uh, these are permitted uses. Uh, their review is limited to site plan review. Essentially corrective measures to protect the neighboring properties, which I think have been is in installed over the course of the last two years that this project has been reviewed. I don't think the planning board can condition the issuance of the ALF approval to, uh, as a precondition to construction of any of the cottages. Nothing in the PRD regulations nor the town board's February twenty twenty-three approval authorize or allow that. And as the planning board, your jurisdiction is limited to what's permitted under the state law, as well as what's permitted in the code. Again, you know, in the interest of alleviating some of the concerns or potential doubts that some board members may have about the ALF, you know, we're looking to try to find a common middle ground. We understand that, you know, people want some control points, and we'd be happy to discuss that with the board as long as it's reasonable, uh, and related to the site. Um, again, um, you know, and and that's that's really it. So, you know, in short, you know, we're here for any questions or comments. Um, of course, we have to open up the public comment.
I'm gonna quickly go to staff, um, anyone from staff got any comments?
No, I think, uh, hearing from the public is probably the board has any questions directly.
You're we're gonna get in a poll here. And comments, anything he said. Anyone from the board? Next.
Mike, please.
Instead of you five to make a check, three and forty for an active, the application for, uh, ALF.
Correct.
That today, yesterday?
It was electronically filed last night, and the hard copies were sent today.
Why now after?
Because we we couldn't wait any longer. You know, we were waiting, you know, I guess the phrase perfect is the enemy of good.
Well, you were told that you were waiting on this permit.
And we're waiting. Yes, we are. We are waiting.
Just submitted a check, yes.
Correct, because again, we came to the conclusion that board members were concerned that we weren't moving forward with the ALF because of the claim. That's not the case. We weren't moving because we didn't have all the information. But, you know.
Well, I have a problem with that. Just find that and that reply. The other thing is the DOT. I mean, I remember sitting here at this discussion that we weren't gonna build anything to that could be a deep permit. Then there was, um, well, we're gonna put in some sewer lines and stuff, and that's all it's gonna be until we get the DOT permit. Now you've got multi-million dollar walls, more infrastructure, now you're claiming a partnership, but you still don't have your DOT permit. And we don't even know if we're gonna get that. And that causes problems for the surrounding neighborhoods, such as Mayor Drive. You know, walk.
Well, nothing's built right now. So, you know, if
when you're proposing housing now, there's still no DOT permit or
Right, and I and we have no problem conditioning the issuance of certificate of occupancies upon installation of the light. That's not an issue. The issue is the is tying the cottages to the Department of Health license.
Well, the issue for the cottage is what? You got a high-density project because you're gonna need it on the system living facility. And we don't have any guarantee that part through if you don't have the cottage.
Correct, and that's why we're saying in order to meet a middle ground, we're we're open to any control points where the ten, the planning board can control the process, so the cottages don't get too far ahead of the assisted living facility.
Well, what guarantee? Have that and start that project and you have, let's say, fifty, sixty built, and then you decide ALF.
Well, he's already invested a significant amount of money, say that, but that's that's useful. We're starting a project without a permit. So just understand he's leasing the pad site, so if he doesn't want to build any more cottages, he's not gonna make much of a return if he's only got fifty or sixty cottages. What is that? Thirty-five, forty percent occupancy?
I'm just throwing a number out there.
Right. Right.
Another thing we could use is divert back to the head of the lots, then he could build, then he can
Correct.
They got a lot.
He can build a hundred and twenty single-family homes unrestricted age. So I I I guess if you want to take the extreme worst-case scenario, where, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but you're saying what if the builder builds the sixteen cottages and doesn't do anything further? Then you have a sixty-acre parcel with sixty cottages where under the R one-half acres under zoning, he would be permitted a hundred and twenty single-family homes, age unrestricted. So that's a New York scenario, the worst-case scenario is sixty senior housing cottage. We even know this is restricted because it started out as a, if the living facility, if if ALF doesn't get built, it's no longer an assisted living facility, so that opens the door. It was absolutely age-restrictly because that's part of the PRRD regulations. It has to be for folks sixty-two years of age or older. There has to be declarations and documents recorded in the clerk's office. So that is in your code.
That's in the PRRD.
Correct. Nobody's disputing that.
Uh, I'm just concerned that we keep moving the goalposts here and I just don't.
I I understand that, and that's why we're saying, you know, we can certainly entertain some control points so we don't get too far ahead of ourselves.
Anyone on board? Any questions?
Yeah.
Frank?
Um, John, is there any guarantees that you can give us that ALF will be built? I mean, what kind of guarantees can you give us?
And so what I've been told is it's not really a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. So as soon as he's authorized to build the assisted living facility from the Department of Health, he will build it. I mean, it the two work together. Um, you know, the one kind of feeds off the other. Uh, so, you know, that is his intent is as soon as the authorization is granted by the state is to build the assisted living facility.
John, last month's, um, meeting, or maybe it was a month before, you said there were items that you needed in order to file the Department of Health.
Correct.
What were those items? Can you tell me that again?
So, um, the New York State Highway Permit was one which we would have liked to have, but again, perfect is the enemy of good.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, you know, there was some concern amongst the planning board members, so we wanted to make sure to you guys be that we were serious about the assisted living facility. So we filed. I know when Ron DeVito was working on the application, I know even before he submits, some of his documents had to get pre-certified. Um, you know, by the Department of Health, even before he submits the application. We also had to finalize an agreement. So Mark is not operating the assisted living facility. He has no idea about the medical components or aspects. So as an owner, he needs to enter into an agreement with an operator. The operator is the one who does the day-to-day facilities. The operator has to enter into agreement with a managing company who actually manages the day-to-day facilities. So it's kind of a tri-party agreement that needs to be negotiated and executed. I mean, you know, and he had to find an owner and operator as well as, uh, he had the, I'm excuse, he had to find an operator as well as a manager to run the facility. So he was interviewing operators, negotiating with operators. So it it's a pretty complex application. It it's not so simple. And and again, I didn't work on it personally, but, you know, there's a lot of different moving parts to this application. So I just want to make it clear we weren't just sitting on our hands.
Was the site plan approval also part of that request?
So I I provided copies of the of the all the resolutions, as well as the final plan uh, that was signed, um, by the chairperson last summer.
Yeah. And now my last and final question is, is the risk was there, the same risk that we presented to you last week of our concerns of what what our concerns are. And they've been there since day one. So knowing that, why weren't those items at least brought it out a little faster and sooner? And and now that you waived it or pretty much have put it on the back burner to, uh, present them to the Department of Health for review. We could have done this many, many months, maybe a couple of years ago.
Well, not like I said, once the final site plan was signed, I think at the very least that had to be signed. But so with respect to waiting, again, there was other parties involved. There was the the operator, as well as the manager, that had to sign the site control agreement. So there were some things that were outside of our control.
And I I my reasons for asking the question, the the concern has always been there. It's just, and I have to back Jerry on this one, since the goalpost has moved so far every time. We have to, you know, at least, um, show our concern now, where we could see before, there might have been a little light at the end of the tunnel, and we could see where you were headed with it, and based on that, you didn't have the the request of building any cottages. Now we're looking to build cottages. That concern is more holding down than it ever was. So that's our concern.
Right, and I guess I I guess I didn't realize that that was not expressed, that we kind of wanted to move forward on some of the cottages. Uh, we didn't realize that this Department of Health license would be tied to the development or construction, you know, but we signed the cottage.
And it did. One of our conversations we had, I believe, DOT sign, or I mean, the lights were included in the phase eight proposal that we spoke about. I believe it was a month and a half ago or two months ago.
Right, and we're not just meeting with fact.
But it's still in phase A.
Meeting in fact, that a certificate of occupancy needs to be, um, carefully issued until the light is installed.
Okay, Paul, you have the Department of Health license.
Just a clarification. So the pre-certification referred to John has not been obtained by Ron.
So that's you did file the applications.
Okay.
If you ask you with some policies and procedures, I mean, I've had details from him.
And and the operating agreements, the the three parties.
Yes, that's.
So you have a a managing um, entity for the ALF as well as, uh,
Yeah, so there's the, uh, there's the owner, which is Mark, and then there's the operator. And then below the operator is the actual manager.
Okay, and just wanted to confirm that those agreements.
So those are all in place at this time?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so then the only thing you're looking for now is going to be what? Site plan approval and the DOT?
Yes, looking for I'm really confused.
From our, well, in order to actually fulfill your requirements of the DOH, um, request a license for that.
Right, so we already have approvals for the ALF itself.
I got that, yeah. I'm talking about the, um, DOT approval.
Yes, we need the actual permit in hand, which my understanding, Kelly's not here, but I think September is kind of the date I've heard.
Right, and then the last thing we were talking about was the site plan approval by the board here in order to present it to the Department of Health.
Right, I mean, we already have a signed site plan showing the assisted living facility, but we can certainly update them with a new one.
Okay, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm confused. It's more with the ALF, not with the P, not with the cottages.
Correct.
Okay, so okay, so anybody else on board? Any questions?
I have one question. Uh, you did mention, and I would know where, maybe it's my question, that the developer is not selling under, uh, cottage. There's some other party getting close to that?
Yeah, so so the developer is gonna be the landlord, and he will be leasing the pad sites. But that is, and the pad sites will contain the cottages. And somebody else, another developer, manufacturer, is selling the cottages to the individual residents. And aren't they, and aren't they not involved?
That is under at stated prices, not market price, if they're ever limited by the senior housing.
There, I I guess the individual resident can probably choose between a couple of different options.
Say that the price is not market price. Some senior housing right? Or might be that just any portable units?
Well, the portable units will have their own special price and their own special lease. Um, but the market rates will be whatever the market dictates.
And that goes not through the development, that some other, that he not wanted.
Correct, he has no involvement with purchase of cottages.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Just one other question, I think, I might have misunderstood. Would you do the way, would at least you're the health department, the ALF, following what you filed for yesterday, didn't you?
Right.
And this is something that?
I don't know what your question is.
So I'll continue trying to get the health department, we just filed for, yes. Tell them for you want to get it.
You know, we never, we never represented that we filed the application. That was the issue.
The health department?
We were concerned with the with the license for the ALF.
Health department, who else?
You guys were concerned that we hadn't filed for the health department, I suggest, because the
You filed yesterday.
Correct, the response to your concerns to show that we are serious about filing this.
But we've been going on to help open this for a year.
I I think I can bear that up. At one point, they didn't think that it needed to be, um, a certain portion of the building, that we need to have the Department of Health filing, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, we we fixed that and we modified it to address, again, the board's concern that you wanted the entire building fully licensed.
Right.
And that's what we applied for.
And I think we went over at the Department of Health, he did a package, it was a hundred percent.
Yeah, submit a partial package for review.
We talked about that last week.
But they did.
They did, they did.
We did it because
Yesterday.
Because you guys were concerned.
Yeah, we've been concerned for over a year.
I think. But the only outstanding issue is the the privacy.
Yes, that's my understanding is that.
Ninety-nine, forty-nine percent there.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, for filing, but not for approval. Let's we'll treat it that way.
Right, well, just like any process, there's back and forth. Somebody submits an application to the planning board. Can you clarify this? Can you amplify that? Can you amplify that?
Correct.
Supply this, you know, I mean, that's just like any application process, there's a back and forth.
Paul?
I could say, um, you know, developer, if you want to provide a whole package that is complete. Because you want to minimize that back and forth, especially when you're dealing with stadium to stadium. So, like I said, we've always wanted to be able to include in that package the DOT permit.
Perfect, because that would be the enemy of good, I'm going to say that, because that's essentially what we figured out.
I mean, DOH is going to have a comment, they're going to say, well, we need that final permit. Um, and that'll be September, it sounds like. But, you know, depending on the state agency and how they approach it, they may uh, at least start review of other parts of the nation. So.
Just a question for, uh, for Paul and John, yes, um. Um, so would the, would the approved site plan uh, at the phase, would we be essentially? Would the phases be in the approval package that Scott signs? That, or is that just like a condition that's linked to it, or what, how's that, how's that, you know, that's?
Yeah, so depending on how the board designs it, uh, that would all be part of the site plan approval. There would be conditions that basically set up milestones. Uh, that, that would, you know, allow them to do certain things, and have a stop point until they provide other things.
Yeah, but I guess like, is there a site plan for Phase One, you know, that's kind of.
Uh, no.
There's an overall site plan, and then there's some verbal.
Yeah, so, so basically, the, the construct, um, that has been suggested by the applicant. Is you, you provided overall site plan approval. And then each phase is subject to uh, more detailed design review by the planning board and uh, CPL and they. Um, and if the board desires, you can have the chair sign um, each phase on and sign off on each phase.
Yeah, I guess that's worth my question.
We would do that, yeah.
That would be, thanks. So our script would disappear within the period, the ALF wasn't Phase One, right? This particular script.
Correct, so we, uh, could the ALS in its own separate phase category. Basically, the answer to what phase it is, is as soon as we get authorization from the state, whenever that needed.
Yeah, more feedback from the board, I need you guys to start talking about a little bit more. Um, we've already been option one and two, we've re-reviewed those. Um, I have no, I need some input on what you're looking at, and what your, your comments are on those options. And John, you've received those two, if I'm not mistaken. And what is your position on either one of those two? And is there anything that you see on, on either one that you would like to go over a little bit more? Or have a better understanding from the attorney and what we were deciding on this?
Sure, so as far as, I guess, I think there are three options, option one and three. In my mind, in my opinion, I think those are illegal and unreasonable conditions, again, because. It's not related to site plan issue, it's related to a, a permit that has nothing to do with the site. But regardless of that, I, I think there's some, you know, I think we can work with option two. Um, you know. Just to kind of reach some compromise. Um, you know, I, I think we could work with some expanded version of option two, where. Um, something more than twenty-one minutes, but less than seventy-eight. You know, and whatever that number, where the board feels comfortable, um, you know, we can try to find some meeting. Hopefully, in the middle, where, and that would be the control point. And then once that gets finished, we would have to go back to the board and, you know, if we wanted to go any further.
And, and so we're clear on this, this is more, even though you've got a copy of it to understand it, this is more for our board to at least have an understanding. Of what we could do or what needs to be done. Okay, so I'm going to say, um, I don't believe it's an offering to you. I believe it was just something more of an understanding that we needed to see on paper, so that we could come up with this, because again. Um, we've all voiced our concerns last week, of what were, what was, what was really going on here, what our concerns were, so. Um, do you want to go over option two with everyone here on the board? Or is that not something you would do at this point?
We'd like to do whatever the board's.
Because, because we're reading it, or reading it to the record, I think would be a good way to go. And at the same time, the board have any concerns with anything on there, we could discuss that a little bit at this time.
As we go. Yeah, so, um, again, as, as Scott explained, this is really just to get the conversation going. Uh, the goal uh, was make sure that there are. Milestones along the way that would make sure that the. DOT permits are obtained and make sure that the DOH license is obtained. Would make sure that the traffic light is installed, the sidewalks are installed. And the assisted living facility is built. Um, and, and the control points essentially would limit the number of cottages that could be built. At certain points, until the applicant reaches the goals that the town is seeking in terms of. Getting the permits, getting the license, installing the traffic light, and constructing the ALS. So with that sort of overview, uh, the first. Uh, so that would be approval, an overall approval. That would of the site plan, that would require the applicant to come in for um. Approval of each phase of the, of project. And come in for additional site plan reviewing, and, and you know, that's where you really get into the detailed review. Of each individual site plan, you know, down to the mini-grading of what kind of landscaping you want to have and that sort of.
Ah.
Um, but so, uh, the slip and stormwater controls and how the infrastructure is going and. Um, that's, that's the ALF can help focus on. The, the initial approval would also, if you want, uh, want to accommodate the applicant's request. Would allow for the installation of the infrastructure that is required for Phase A, which is the. Uh, do you want to point to that? This one, yeah, and that Phase A is um, that. The infrastructure that needs to be put in there is those retaining walls that John was referring to. And also the water and sewer infrastructure that actually has to go under the retaining walls. Um, so the applicant would be doing that a, a, as part of this initial approval. At that point. They would not be able to do anything more until they provide proof of DOT approval of the traffic light. And the filing of the New York State DOH application for the ALS. So they've already filed the application, um, that box is checked. But, you know, they still need their DOT uh, permit, or. And then, at that point, they could gain approval of Phase A, based on this option. Of the cottages, which is seventeen or twenty-one units. And those are the ones that are in turquoise. And they could start construction once that uh, Phase Site Plan is signed. And a building permit is issued, they could start construction with those, they could build those. But before, now you throw down the condition, the next condition. They couldn't get a certificate of occupancy, so there'd be no occupancy of any cottage on the property. Until the traffic light is installed. And, and the DOT permits for the sidewalks are issued. Okay, and I, I forgot, John, what is the timeframe that you ran to the state with Phase A construction?
So I, I think that would be, um, well, to start construction.
How long is it going to take you to construct Phase A?
Well, I guess there's ten components, so there's the actual site work and the infrastructure work. Um, and then the other is, is the buildout, and a lot of it depends on sales. You know, it depends on fast the sales are moving, so it's kind, it's hard to predict how many, how fast the units will sell. But I, I would say for the infrastructure work, I, I think that's anticipated for like, you know, August, September, you know, this fall.
Yeah, okay, so. Okay, so, again, so they could not. Get a certificate of occupancy for any other cottages in Phase A, or any occupancy of the site. Until the actual traffic light and fire drive is installed, and they have their DOT right-of-way permits for the sidewalks. The next step would be approval of the infrastructure work for Phases B and C. And also of Phase C of the uh, cottages. And the reason that we would, we, we were proposing, this was based on discussion with Andy Byrne. Uh, we're proposing installation of an infrastructure for B and C together, is because they're interrelated. It has to happen at the same time. And it has to happen in order for Phase C cottages to be constructed and grading and all to be done there. So Phase C would then need uh, a proof for construction. Importantly, Phase C includes the clubhouse, which is a key amenity uh, for the PRRD. Uh, so that's why we kind of moved towards uh, Phase C, we, you know, our staff suggestion for the board. Um. This is a total at this point of thirty-eight minutes that you have, that would have been approved. Um. But what we identified as the condition, that no certificate of occupancy for Phase C. Could be uh, issued, so they could be built, but they could not be occupied until. Uh, the applicant has obtained his DOH license for the assisted living facility. So at that point, you know, you, you know, they've got approval to move forward uh, with the ALS. But you will have thirty-eight minutes of cottages that have been built and the infrastructure uh, for Phases A and C. Um. Once they get their DOH approval. Uh, there, you, you're still going to want to look at the ALS at a more detailed design level. Um, so we would do uh, the, the updated approval of the assisted living facility site plan. And uh, the approval of the Phase B site plan. Um, and then no building permits, what we, we started to do here. Um, no building permit for Phase B could be issued until the building permit for the ALS is issued. So you basically, you know, because the site plan is a level of detail. But then you have to provide another level of detail in order for it to hold permit. So you could not get your um, building permit for Phase B, though you've got, you've also got your ALS building permit. That's another control point, make sure that the ALS is progressing. Um. The next step would be um, approval of Phase E. And then, again, we're tying this to, so this would be the Phase C site plan. And then we're, we're basically tying um. The construction of the ALS in some way to the building permit for Phase D. So all of those. Thirty-six units that comprise Phase D, they could not get a building permit for that. Until CPL certifies that substantial construction of the ALS has been under payment. And so again, we're, we're saying, you know, you have A, B, and C that have been approved. That have been allowed to be constructed, allowed to get certificates of occupancy for, you have your uh. Traffic light, you have your ALS license, and you have a requirement that. The ALS has to be substantially under construction before they get those additional units. Um, and then similarly, with Phases E and F, that would be the next approvals that would be given. And the, the site plans for those phases uh, would need to be signed by Scott. The old building permit for those, like, uh, those phases could be issued. Until the ALS was certified to be, or, and seventy-five percent complete, and everybody says, what does that mean? Um, you know, that's to be defined, and the, the thing being that it would have to be. More than half built, before they could get their building permits for C and D. All of this is subject to board discussion, but it was to provide one potential construct. For holding the applicant's feet to the fire and making sure that the town achieves its uh. Objectives in terms of uh, installation of the traffic light, the sidewalks. And the uh, construction of the assisted living facility, uh, which has been approved by the Department of Health.
It's just a more defined way of, um, what our meeting was two months ago. So we knew that there was going to be a phasing plan, and how we were going to orchestrate the progression of the construction, through the planning board. So it's just a little more detailed with conditions.
Right, and, but I don't remember the tying any issuance of the Department of Health license to construction of the cottages. And I don't think even the board can do that, but, you know, interest reaching a compromise, willing to work with you on that.
And we got it, and you have to understand, and I'm sure you do, because I've said it a thousand times. So our concern is for the town of Lloyd. Our concern for the town of Lloyd is making sure that we don't end up with cluster homes up there on a, on a property. That it's a PRRD today, but if an ALS isn't in, won't be a PRRD anymore. Therefore, not have to somehow be rezoned if possible. So rezoning it back, or falling back to its original R one half, these homes will already be clustered together, not meeting what the requirement would be. You see where I'm at?
Mm-hmm.
And now what are we stuck with? What's the town of Lloyd stuck with? A bunch of slabs, maybe not even sold. Although we do know you put a lot of money into the infrastructure, you've made that note, but it's to no value, other than the items that directly involve the town itself.
Yeah, and there are a lot of.
Fight is on you.
Those items that I listed were all directly benefiting the town.
And, and that's great, and we understand that, but now when you have the main um, picturesque part of Highland. That you're going to be looking at, now a sea of slabs, because we didn't get our guarantees of the DOH. And we do for retaining walls, how do you do that?
Right, but I, I guess you're kind of assuming the worst and.
We, we have to, parade of the horribles. But we don't know, and, and that's the only thing, we don't know it. You can agree with me on that, right?
Yes, I think you can look at my client's history and the money that he's invested, he is in this for the long haul.
I got you, I've been in the discussion for forty-three years, John, and with all due respect, I've watched twenty million dollar Johns start. I purchased many dollars' worth of items, and I waved at them, goodbye. The state changed their mind, didn't want to give, give us the rest of the project, twenty million dollars out the window.
Been before the planning board for four years trying to build this project.
And we appreciate it.
Hasn't left yet.
And I think this is why we came up with discussion points, so that we can understand things a little bit better. And not focusing on totally the negative, but on focusing on what the better part for the community is. And the better part is seeing at least something, and then you give us something. You get something, we give you something back, and I don't know if anybody on the board would be willing to say differently to that, because it is our risk that we're taking. Okay, just.
And they're bringing, in the effort to compromise, and to address your concerns, to have some control. They're bringing, in the effort to compromise and to address your concerns, to have some control points.
Agreed, and they're here, and not saying any of this isn't open for discussion further. Okay, this is, these were talking points for the board. And we gave it to you out of concern that you didn't want to be, we didn't want to blindside you with anything tonight. So you have it, so we were talking about, um, and we went into attorney, um. Board conversation last month, or last week I should say, so that we can get a better understanding of it and what everybody's viewpoints here were. So they're drafted, we looked at them, we're presented to you. I think the board and somebody talked to me, you got any other concerns other than what's here?
My only question is on the map.
Use the mic, Maz, you know.
They, you said you would build a hundred ninety-seven. That's what it was approved by the town board as.
You also build the hundred fifty-six, that's like, they probably stayed so far enough.
And mind you, if you're doing our man, maybe Paul's got the map off a little bit, but I, you know, it was only for discussion, not really. Right. Anyone else?
Well, I mean, we have to assume, you know, assuming a worst case scenario, I think.
Keep in the mic, guys, because for some reason I'm not hearing this a lot tonight.
The main concern from all the board members are obviously. Are we gonna hear your approval from the Department of Health? We have to assume a worst case scenario here. Let's say we go with option number two. Okay, Department of Health approval never comes, I mean, we're stuck with twenty-one units, infrastructure for B and C with no C O's. Okay, what, what is your client, what do you think your client will do in that scenario?
Let's, let's assume the absolute worst, which. I think would be kind of unusual, but what the Department of Health says, no, there are other licenses. That we can seek from the Department of Health. Um, you know, we're seeking an assisted living facility with special needs and the memory care. If for some reason the Department of Health says no to that, you can, there are other adult care facilities that are licensed by the Department of Health. Where the application process is not as grueling and not as long. So you can submit for one of those, I think it's in, in chance or enhanced housing. Uh, as part of the adult care facility, I mean, there are other licenses. Um, from the Department of Health that are, you know, that don't have as grueling an application process. This is the one we want, because we think the memory care is, is a good angle and there's really a need for the memory care in this community.
Dave?
Thank you, um, just so the board knows, if the project doesn't get a license and has to change, they can always come back. Uh, for site plan again, for either a different building, a different use. Uh, there are lots of other things in the P R R D language that is, are allowed in a P R R D. So, um, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot, I listened to the conversation last week, I've talked with many of you. The, if the A L F doesn't get built, we will have cottages sort of clustered up on the hill. That doesn't mean that the other site will ever not be P R R D. The, it has been zoned, P R R D by the town board. There's an underlying zone, but doesn't revert to that. Until somebody decides it reverts to that, and that's a town board legislative action. So it's gonna be P R D, whatever's. And, you know, I heard a concern that, you know, if Mark sold the property, that, you know, somebody could come in and do, and do whatever. Well, they can't do whatever as long as it complies with the P R R D language and the uses they're in. Okay, I just wanted to put that out there, right, you know, because I've been thinking about it a lot, what happens if the. Because my concern was, well, the cottages will be sort of sitting up there in zoning limbo. But that is only true until something or something, or someone comes along, built the front part of the property, and maybe it's not. You know, the big A L F that we see, maybe it's a smaller piece, who knows? Um, but as John said, they are, they have applied, I've seen the application from state, so. There I am.
Anyone else?
Well. Still don't have DOT permit, so. I'm looking, we're just on the mayor drive right now, correct? For access? It's always been. So you're basically gonna have a small town up there. Possibly just being accessed by mayor drive doing the DOT permit?
No, just to be clear. The, it's, there's gonna be no C O's issued until the traffic light is installed, I, I don't know if I made that clear, maybe not.
No, you did, you did, and it's here also in option.
What's the kind you come back here and sing the blues again? Is when we wanted to have the plump, the timber structure put in the wall, plump. Warline and stuff before we got the DOT permit. Now you're playing my hardship. They go ahead and DOT permit for your A L F, it's not one shovel on the ground. Once again, we're working with you. But here's a year later, we're still talking about the same issues.
Paul, I'm gonna leave you on that.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's a good question, um, DOT has defined what, you know, if it was playing. With me and approval of what's important traffic light. Um, the, the difference, I think, Jerry, would be that. That is a. Full-on, pro-recondition for the board to require. Because you don't want any more traffic going on to that road. Until that traffic light is installed. And so nobody's gonna be allowed to live there. Until that traffic light is installed. And I, I don't know of any of the board members who would want to, uh, do away on that.
So there wouldn't be an increase in traffic, uh, that would in, in, so anyway, at all hurt Mayor Drive.
And, and it's an enforceable condition, it's not something that.
We're not asking you to change that from that position. Again, the issue we have is tying in the cottages. To the Department of Health license approval, which I believe is illegal.
I can see where some people come back here six months from now and saying, still have my DOT permit, I don't have my A L F and my D O H permit. But unfortunately, you made the site, that's why I'm stuck.
I, I do see issues. I understand your concern, anyone else? Brian? Brian? Um, is, yeah, Andy on the, uh, is Andy on? Do you have anything, Andy, since I didn't ask you?
I, I'm here, um, we, we've done, um, a fairly detailed review of the plans that were submitted. Um, I won't go into that right now, um. My only, uh, real concern about the phasing is that I, I really want, um. The detailed plans to be very well defined in terms of what's in each phase. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to go by these high-scale. Plans and try to figure out which wall is in which phase and which, which manhole and, and pipes are in each phase, I, I, I want that detailed out. Um, so we know exactly what's included. Um, in each bay, in each phase, specifically phase A, you know, since that's the first, um, task at hand.
Sure, and we can feel that as we go along also.
Right.
And Andy, this is Ken from L R C. Uh, as we discussed, you know, once everyone's on the same page with what. The phases are in the areas, those phase lines would be. Uh, interpolated onto the detailed plans with notes specific to that. So that as you look through each grading plan or site plan, you'll see clear definitions of what would be. The phase line, where we're planning on ending each utility, Andy and I have had discussions about that. So that we can make sure that it's all buttoned up and typed together.
Right. Yep, agreed, yeah, we have had those discussions.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so you've. Pretty much got what we're looking at, and you said you have a couple ideas and changes you probably would like to make on it, so.
Yes, uh, you're gonna open it up to the public comment?
We're gonna go there next, so, it's just good, go ahead, sit back down and see if anybody wants to speak to it. So is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on or behalf of this project? I'm sorry, I have to open it. I thought we were open last one, weren't we? So I need to open the public hearing.
Motion? I need a motion. Move second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none? Public hearing's open, and then if the public would like to come up, state your name, have a seat, state your name, and.
Um, my name is Nick Daragona, um, one of the most renowned Highland, uh, twenty years I've been here. My questions is what kind of tax revenue would this bring to the town, this project, this people?
That's out of our purview, we, we don't, we, we don't review that part of it.
You, you wouldn't have a ballpark as to whatever it would do for the town as far as the tax basis. Or stabilizing the taxes, I did some estimates, I figured probably about two, two million, maybe two point two million. Which would double our taxes, wouldn't that be good for the town? About what our taxes are, we started going up, not talking about them going down, we're talking about them staying well. Wouldn't that be good for the town?
I would say any construction such as this would be good for the town, but again, but we're not open for debate, we're gonna hear what you have to say.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, I can't speak, you know.
Sure.
You're speaking. You know, another thing, as you've been in construction, you know how many jobs it's gonna create, wouldn't that be beneficial for the town?
It's all been reviewed, yes.
Okay. So I mean, you know, I'm just kind of curious. Listening to the conversation. And seeing the brakes put on and looking at the project, looking at the walls and everything. If you put the brakes on the project, then it's a nice one. Then it, it doesn't do any duplication for the town, right? So I mean, I'm just, you know. I, I understand these types of facilities, my wife is working instead of facilities, my wife worked at Sonic. They always had an issue, there wasn't enough beds. So I mean, I see it as really a beneficial thing, I sat here quietly, listened to all the different, you know, different. Sides of the equation, I understand your concerns. I would feel the same way, you know, is this guy kind of really? Followed through all the way across the board and everything you asked to do. But he's also put skin in it. Which a lot, you know, when you were in construction, he did stuff that really. Didn't necessarily benefit him, but it benefited the town. Correct? Oh, okay, I mean, it's like I said, I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in. Because I, I see it as, as a win-win, I mean, not to mention, the town's small businesses are suffering from COVID. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty jobs of that type of operation that that would create would bring more revenue to the small businesses. Which we can use in this town. Well, that's one, that's a language.
Anyone else in the public?
I have a question.
Please come forward and state your name.
My name's Mary Ann Maddick.
Speak into the microphone, please.
My name's Mary Ann Maddick, I've been at Fifty Star and Place, and I received this notice about getting a bunny property owner from my experience. This I will say privately tonight, so. Um, I'm a little frightened, and I kind of want to know why I need to be concerned.
I, I can't even answer to it, Dave.
Yeah, so, uh, so today's a public hearing on the project. Uh, w- we don't typically do debates, so if you have a commented question, um, I'm happy to show you, uh, what the plan is.
It's a little late for this, isn't it, for me to give this, I mean.
No, it, it's, it's actually, um, so we've done informational meetings in the past on this project, it's been under review for. Much too long, uh, all four and change years.
Four slash years.
Um, so.
I guess my question is why am I giving this now?
Because that is a statutory requirement, uh, for a public hearing, a project of this size in New York State.
Right, and I live across the street, so. What do I need to be worried about?
Um, so the project has managed, uh, do you mind if I respond quickly? Because if, if she's not familiar with it, if anybody else isn't familiar with it, this might be helpful. Um, the project, uh, is going to add a hundred ninety-seven senior cottages, sixty-two and up. Although, John, your application is sixty-five and up at D O H, might want to check that with Ron. Um, uh, we were concerned, the board was concerned about traffic, about visual impacts. Um, about water and sewer impacts, and they've done now a four and change year review. Kind of, uh, picking the project apart and making sure that the applicant, the project. Uh, does mitigation items to, to alleviate some of that, and one of those things, yeah, um, you live on Mayor Drive?
No, I live on Sterling.
Oster, um, so, uh, you are there, um, you are included because of the, the sort of, um, circle that we draw around it, uh, is a distance that we apply. Uh, you will be visually impacted.
Yeah, by that storage thing and other stuff.
Okay, so, um. I'm not talking about the storage unit, this is a different animal, um, and the board has been, I think, very careful to make sure that the project is as attractive. As it could be, knowing that there's more review to come. For the larger building, which will be the front, which will be an, uh, assisted living facility with memory care, nursing care, that kind of thing.
Sounds like the word, um, George goes. Anyway, sorry.
But I'm sorry, thank you.
My name's Brian Dixie, I live on Apple Lane in Highland Hills, uh, for the past fourteen years. And I came to one of these informational meetings at local, um, four years ago. And I heard the developers', uh, traffic expert claimed it was gonna be no, uh, significant impact to traffic. And I had a problem with that now as I did then. How are you telling me there was a hundred ninety-seven units, roughly more than doubling the entire size of Highland Hills? All exiting and entering off of Mayor and Nine W. There's gonna be no impact to track. Has the town board or the planning board? Decided to hire their own independent traffic expert to get an opinion on this?
John, you want to answer that, please?
Yeah. Okay, so, so just so you understand, as part of the project proposal. The, the developer is proposing a new traffic light at the intersection of Mayor Drive and Nine W. Um, so that is alleviating any of the traffic concerns, so we have a traffic expert. Submit reports and supplemental reports, and, and the planning board has their own traffic expert. That reviews those reports and comments on those reports. Um, and so between the two traffic consultants, that's where, based upon that, that's where. Planning board came to the conclusion that there's gonna be no significant environmental impacts. With respect to traffic, I also want to note that. Even though there's a hundred ninety-seven units, they are, they're cottages, they're, they're one and two-bedroom cottages that will be restricted to seniors. So it's not gonna have the same bedroom count impact. That the existing community has, you're not going to have the adult parents with the adult children in the same household. I have four cars in my house, people are going up and down the driveway day after day. This community is going to be seniors, sixteen-year-olds, age or older. They're not gonna have the traffic impacts that a typical family has. And this was all contemplated in the traffic studies and their specific. I T E traffic counts depending on, you know, the type of proposal. And so we submitted reports, the planning board, engineer reviewed those reports. And that's how they came to the conclusion that it's not gonna be a significant environmental impact. So long as we have the traffic light, which we have added the traffic light, or we are going to. As soon as we get that D O T permit. Um, as part of, uh, any potential mitigation for this project.
No offense to the developer's attorney, but this would be the equivalent of taking the defense attorney's word for it, I mean, that's why it's not. Why is the town board and the planning board not hiring their own traffic expert?
Well, so my office is the reviewing engineer for the town planning board, and we have our own traffic engineers that have reviewed. The, the material submitted by the, the applicant. So they have hired their own consultant.
That's all right.
And Andy, did you, um, talk a little bit about the? Town's review and the town's conclusions?
Sure, I mean, we, we've, we've reviewed everything that's been submitted and we've, we've commented. Um, they've responded to our comments and addressed our comments, and at this point, we feel that. That the proposed mitigation is, is appropriate and, and addresses the concerns. Um, and will not have, uh, a significant impact.
I mean, the, the property does go outside venue. So you could have the residences enter and exit off of venue. Which would significantly alleviate. A hundred ninety-seven cottages, I mean, you're saying, again, you know. Hundred eighty houses might have, you know, but there's a lot of kids in Highland Hills, I have three kids, they don't drive yet. So we have two cars, most families in the neighborhood have two cars. So I don't really understand how a hundred ninety-seven units plus an assisted living facility, plus staff. Plus deliveries that can evade all the different traffic that's going in and out of that intersection. Is not gonna significantly impact traffic.
I, I think, I think what you need to keep in mind is that these are retirement age individuals, so they're not gonna be. Traveling at the same time as most people. So they're not gonna be traveling at the same time as most people. They'll they'll be traveling mostly and typically on purpose and off hours outside of rush hour timeframes. Um, you know, the the A L F has a direct access to Route nine W. Um, which hopefully will uh, limit the impact of uh, staff. The that would have on Mayor Drive.
That's my main concern, I I just don't think that this is gonna be no immediate impact to traffic or no significant impact to traffic. But once this project is done, there's no one doing it, you can't go back and fix this later. So we have to sit in traffic coming down Mayor to nine W, we're stuck with it now. There's no going back.
But you're actually, what they're doing is cleaning up the intersection, because if you come down there, you can't make that turn, that's illegal.
Right, everybody does.
And that's, that's party, how many accidents have you been called to there?
I I get it, and you know, but now shutting down north and south traffic on nine W. For that extra light is definitely gonna add to traffic on nine W.
Well, the best I could tell you is having our engineer advise us on what he had given, or what he's reviewed, and what we've reviewed. Um, and then there's a time study on what traffic is is on nine W. We've seen all of this and they've mitigated any issues or shown how it does not have any adverse impact. Like, so to the best of our knowledge, not being an engineer, I'm gonna have to say I I. Deviate to our staff, they are the people who actually appropriate the right or wrong to it, and then we'll. Pretty much advise that we're not.
I think there. I think there are signal timing changes as well that are included in this mitigation, is that correct, Andy?
That's correct, uh, but that's 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 more to keep traffic flowing on nine W better. Um, but yes, there are signal traffic improvements as well. One o- one other thing to mention too is that not only did did our office review all these studies, the D O C D O T has reviewed that information as well. That's part of the highway work permit that they're waiting to to receive.
And what information's available in your office?
Absolutely.
So you could review that.
The New York State D O T doesn't state that it will add no impact to traffic, right?
So what New York was, New York State does not, but their but their report, which has been reviewed embedded by Andy Learns Company, C P L and D O T. Actually shows improvements at the Mayor Drive nine W intersection for the term north, which is currently a lead. And widely on the same.
By the way. Hey, I I wanted a traffic light there for fourteen years, so they actually gave you now a legal exit way. Add that development, I appreciate that.
And thank him on your way out.
It's it's the hundred ninety-seven individual units that concerns me, they're all gonna be entering and exiting off of that one. Mayor Drive in a nine W intersection. So I think there's a way to alleviate that, you just build an entrance out on Vinger. But that's up to the planning board, obviously, to make adjustments to the plan before it'll leave further. Is there also gonna be access on Apple Lane to the resident project?
Only emergency access, I believe.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. There anyone else in the public?
Good mind to speak.
Be gentle, mind state your name, please.
Sorry, um, hi, my name's Tricia Chapman, I live on um, Block Drive in Highland Hills. Um, I also have concerns about the traffic, um. It really kind of does, I don't wanna um, address the studies, but it does kind of defy common sense that. Um, that much increased population won't affect our neighborhood and the traffic. Uh, it might not be significant by an engineer's um, measurements, but I think it will definitely have an effect, and we see an effect already with the. Construction traffic in the area. Um, but putting that aside, um, I'm glad to hear the discussion about the light, um, that's something that's really important. I feel to many of us in the neighborhood. Um, I do feel frustrated because we've been talking about the light for four years and not longer. Um, and the option that you're talking about, I was curious about when the light is required, I I understand it's about certificates of occupancy, but how many units? Will there be um, built when the light is required for the?
So the the way this scenario is set up. Um, the first phase, which um, is twenty-one units, they could be built. But they could not be occupied. Until that traffic light is installed, so no cottage would be occupied until the traffic light is up and running.
So forty-two drivers potentially, um, we're just looking there, there'd be people coming in and out, there'd be construction vehicles. You know, there is increased traffic just because of the project, even if people are living there. Um, so I would request to the board, um. What else can be done to move along the process? Of getting this permit, because it does impact our neighborhood, um, even before people are living in the cottages. Um, I would also like to request that we keep public comment open, so that we continue to discuss this issue, I think it's really key. Um, to our neighborhood, so. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nobody? Uh, here we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, please.
My name is Robin Wood Brown, and I live on Mayor Drive. And this has been um, a real challenging couple of years while this project has been underway, my property actually borders. Um, where a lot of the development is happening, the commercial drive that's been there, and I'm just um, wondering if you can tell me aesthetically. What is going to happen to those properties that border? Commercial drive, will there be some sort of trees planted, a high fence that will be planted? My concern is that. When this assisted living facility is finally built, that people will be looking directly into my house. I mean, what's what, what sort of aesthetically, what sorts of landscaping, fencing and things like that will be built to protect those whose homes border? The commercial drive.
John?
They do from that.
I do, you want it?
Yeah, if you ever vendor on this too, we do a presentation. So there is gonna be a vegetative buffer um, along the backside of the houses on Mayor Drive.
Alright, the wrong one, sorry, I'm in the wrong one. Say one name.
Sarah, you want to show them how to use that?
Next, next month, you might be here by yourself.
Right, so. So as you can see, there's, I think there's already an existing vegetative buffer, so that will be preserved, in addition, you'll need landscaping throughout the property. To preserve and mitigate any impact, potential impacts to the folks along Mayor and Apple. There's also a landscaping plan that should be part of the package, I I don't know exactly where the trees are going. Um, and they also made sure to try to separate the A L F as far as possible from the property lines. I think there's a significant setback from the A L F in those residential homes.
So John's gonna look exactly like that, let's surrender.
It's tree, it's tree, it's leaf.
Right, and the architect, yes.
So uh, for one extra piece, um. I work right upstairs, uh, you can come down to my office or ask Sarah or myself, we'll be happy to. Send you a link of the uh, or an image of the landscaping plan, happy to do that.
Okay, I will, I will do that, my next question is why the project is underway? Is it possible that they put up some sort of fencing or something like that as a blockade? Um, what has happened, once the uh, the leaves fall away from the trees and we have bare trees? Um, what we find is that when the construction crew is there, there were lights shining in our homes, you know, in in the darkness, and there were giant. Tractors like right outside of our yards, it was kind of difficult to look at that, so it would be helpful if there was some sort of fencing. That would kind of protect our view while the project is underway.
You can only defer to John on that, we can't make that determination, but I'll I'll look into it with the finance construction manager.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm probably gonna make them put a uh, construction fence up, uh, so we don't have kids wandering through heavy equipment areas. And on that side, you know, we'll see what we can do about uh, putting the little lattice slots in, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, and then lastly, I do, I do want to support what my neighbors have said about being concerned about. The impact of traffic on Mayor Drive, I think we do need to try to find some other outlets and some other ways, because. You are going to have a lot of traffic building up on Mayor Drive, if it's the only outlet. Thank you.
Just to. Just to reiterate, it's not the only outlet or entrance or exit into the project. There is an entrance and exit on nine W directly, um, that will certainly serve the A L F. So there are other avenues in and out, and also, I'm pretty sure, and and maybe Andy Learns can confirm. Part of the traffic analysis did it study the queuing or potential backup along Mayor Drive? And so I think that was also part of the analysis.
It did indeed, uh, the traffic analysis did include an evaluation of the stacking at at the new light. Um, and it was, I I don't want to quote, but I don't think it was ever more than six cars, if I recall. Uh, but I'd have to look at that to verify.
Okay, thank you, we'll keep you posted and make sure that we keep it six cars.
Yes, yes, please let us know.
Six cars is a ballpark.
There you go, anyone else in the public? Come on, don't be shy. Okay, we're gonna keep the public meeting uh, public hearing open.
So what I, what I advise is to um. Have the board uh, either discuss now or or contemplate the options uh, that that have been offered up. Um, and then, I don't know, I mean, I hate to have to pump it a month. Um, but we could sort of flesh them out right now, or.
But we still gonna need to hear with John's um, alternate to what we're seeing on an option two. Right, so and I think you should take that time with your team and get back.
I think you should be back right now.
Oh, here we go.
Buckle up.
How's the rest of the board on that? That's gonna have answers, gotta have answers quick.
So I I think it's in in step four, when you look at option number two, step four. Um, it says approval of phase A, twenty-one units, I think. At that point, we would like to see more units than that, you know, whether it's A, B and C or or something to that. Effect, something more than the twenty-one units would would help kind of. Um, while not getting too far ahead of ourselves, but still allow the applicant to start leasing some of the pad sites, um, so we can actually.
How many houses are in in A, they're forty-one or?
B has, A has twenty-one, B has forty-one. So if there's maybe A and B, um, if that's amenable to the board, something to consider.
Um, one of our concerns that we had in our discussion last week was. Um, we could definitely see swapping B and C, because we definitely wanted to have the um. The recreational building, clubhouse built while A is there, so this way they have something to with the.
So that's why I kind of. I kind of, A, B and C kind of go hand in hand, so but what if? You know, if the site work can be done with B and C, but maybe you just cap the number of units, so whatever that number is, fifty, sixty, you know, total. For A, B and C, so not necessarily allowing all the units in B and C, but allowing some of the site work. Uh, because uh, C involves construction of the road and the retaining wall and and the clubhouse, which is all very expensive, but it's only seventeen units. Um, so you get a little more than that, you know, that would certainly go along with that.
Where's the rest of the board second?
We're, we're, we did this, we did this, follow here.
Franco, grab your mic, so everybody can hear you.
Alright, alright, so what if we did this, John, would you be okay, phase A? Phase C, and then we'll give you this part right here of B. Which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen more units.
Okay, I think.
Is that, and that will be along with the infrastructure for all of B? Cause it's no, it's no point.
Yeah, you have to do the infrastructure.
I mean, that's something I could certainly take back to my client.
Well, you gotta take the rest of the board, I was wanting to just, and I don't know, Tom, you got anything?
Well, uh, what what I think is that uh. For the control of zoning, you know, sort of to create this kind of senior health housing situation. And obviously, not this big has to be phased. But it seems to me that the basis for for the first phase of how it is. How many do you need to support the out business? But you know, so that, and there must be examples we can look at, and I don't know if it's kind of the one new policy we can look at. But let's just say, if an out of this size needs. You know, X number of houses to support it.
Well, I don't believe the out has any bearing on the cottages, cause they're two separate. Um, one does, uh, am I right in saying this, I think is the best way.
Yeah, I think that's right, uh, they're gonna populate the A L F. With people who need to go to the A L F.
But populate the A L F, probably the best way. So so it's not kind of hand in hand with it, it is only because of D R R D, but the cottages aren't supporting residences in the A L F.
They're not directly supporting it, but I mean, there's.
But you need to, you need to, I'm gonna need the money to. Is that what you're?
No, no, that's what I'm talking about, so I'm going back to, I mean, look, I'm I'm basing sort of my thoughts here on this. The definition of the independent living units, which says that they're in a healthier community. And the new zoning uses that terminology. So obviously, the intent is for this to be some kind of a community, so if you're operating under a completely different principle, stop me right now. Because that's what, that's kind of the.
The agent place process, what you're thinking of that?
Agent rights. That's what I thought it says, if 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 that's what we're operating under, then, yeah, you need a certain amount to start that off. You need a certain amount, I I'm just gonna, I was just gonna say. Um, and you know, uh, Sanderson uh, would know, or the operator would know better, but there's probably examples we could look at for some logic. So like, I'm not, so again, that idea. If you needed. You know, X number of houses, say whatever it is. Then maybe it's, you know, a percentage of that, twenty-five percent of that, you know, like, or is that your starter kit to get your business rolling? So to me, that's a, seems to me, a basis for a number of houses. That makes sense, cause like, you're trying to encourage this guy, get the project off the ground, get everything rolling, you've got your residence and you've got your facility. Uh, so if that makes any sense. If. If if they need, let's just say, they need a hundred units to break even, wh- what do they need to start, is it twenty-five, is it thirty, that's what I'm going by.
Okay, so I'm thinking about this too, and I'm saying, you guys gave us the phasing plan, A, B, C, D, all the ways that.
Right.
You gave us, so we're only putting conditions in between those.
Right.
So phase A, phase A. Built it. Go ahead, make sure they, and get the infrastructure started in in B and C, however it works there, that's. I I can't imagine us changing too much of that, we presented it not, then phase A is going to include, there won't be a C and there won't be hand or seventeen, thirteen other in B, so.
What I'm saying is the out should be an A, and. Because you're gonna need so many houses to run the out, and maybe I'm wrong, so you tell me if I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the actual, I.
So let me just, yeah, misunderstood, so essentially. According to this option, you're you're allowing the the construction of twenty-one units. Um, but no C O will be issued until a traffic light is installed. And New York State D O T right-of-way permits for sidewalk observation, I I guess as a side note. It's my understanding, in order to put the sidewalks in, there may be some real estate transactions involved, which. If so, it's gonna take a long time to work with the D O T on that. So I guess that's one issue, which I don't think will be resolved. In a matter of, you know, months, it's gonna probably.
And John, we're all to expect, this is why I think that you really need to take this with you, go over with your staff, I think we're. We're, we're taking just an outline for our own understanding, we're giving you a sight into our thought pattern.
Right.
So I would suggest taking this back with your team, deciding what it is you really have issue with, and then we can go a little further from there. I I can't see us really head to the drawdown tonight.
I agree, and I just want to give you some of the major points, really, is is the New York State right-of-way permit for sidewalks. If that involves real estate transfers, that's gonna take a lot.
Okay.
The other issue is just allowing, um. You know, according to this, you know, just the New York State D O H approval. Again, we would like to try to get fifty, sixty units prior to the New York State Department having approval. And however that works out. And however that works out, so I just want to make sure the board understands some of the big bullet points.
So another thing that weighs factor in on this is how many can you sell?
Right.
And so you could want A, B, and part of our A and C and part of B, but you might not be able to sell them all right now. Right. And I I think I'm starting off light and giving you the twenty one, and then you definitely know you got your twenty one. They're sold and then proceed on with the next phase and then if they sell and you if you sold more. If you sell them, then what we're seeing in this, then you can talk to us about maybe saying. Give uh all of C and part B, because that's how many have been sold. And we're talking, this is projected out over the next year. If I'm not mistaken, right? Because you said your infrastructure is gonna take till fall, end of fall or the end of this year. So then your slabs will be built, you don't want to do them in the winters. Right? So you'll do those in the spring, and by the time you get twenty one done, maybe we'll be talking about going into the next phase. Of the seventeen or a partial forty one, and we can say, go there, you know what I mean?
Right, and so maybe the solution is to just focus on phase A. And then, you know, without getting into all the details as far as the future phases and just say, alright, up to this point and then come back.
Right.
And then we'll figure out where you're at, what you're doing, instead of trying to. Put together thirteen steps and maybe you just focus on the first four. We got it, and that's why these are only a thought pattern for us. That's why I said it wasn't an. Uh an option for you.
Right.
Or an offering from the planning board.
Right.
So you had an in-depth look at our thought pattern of a conversation that happened here last week. And what our concerns were, and how can we mitigate some of these concerns? And have you presented to us what you would like to do.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure he has understood our main bullet points.
So we could ask for everything, but you don't even know if you sold them all.
Correct, that's my point. So let's progress on with this piece at a time. Along with our conditions that are there, if you find that our conditions are unbearable, and you think there's something in here that you would like to see differently. That's where I think the board would come in to say, okay, we understand that maybe since maybe we already have the permit for the DOT. Okay, maybe, I I mean, just. Trying to think this through too, this more of a um a design build.
Yeah, I mean, things start moving faster, you can go back and say, hey, surprises, I would have.
Well, I would advise a hard stop at some point.
I agree with that. It's in here, that's in this option, that's why I'm saying this.
But I do agree, coming back, start with it, I mean, if you're comfortable with it, if it's comfortable, start with infrastructure A. Um and and maybe even building permits for A, wait, you know, because you're not gonna do a thing until the DOT says go on the light.
Right, mind you, you only have three years to do this, Mr. Standards' word, for three years you could have this completed.
And Mark, I know you're on there, you heard that, so.
Yes, I'm I'm listening and I uh agree with Dave Barton that uh. You should do A, start A, and we gotta wait until we get the approval on the light. Then we get the COs on whatever pads were leased out. My my question is, I would like to. Continue on B, the infrastructure anyways. I don't want to have to stop on the infrastructure. Because the A infrastructure. May not take that long. That's why I want to, I like Franco's suggestion to do A and part of B or all of B. In the infrastructure, but limit the amount of pads that we can get permits for. Subject to COs with the light. That to me would be uh a good compromise.
That's why, that's why I want, Mark, for John to take this back to your team and have you review it and understand it, because I think. Us hashing out every line of the possibilities that could couldn't be, it's gonna be very hard for us to do that.
Understood. Um so I guess my question is, given the fact that the contractor is close to being finished. I'm told he's got another week or two worth of work. Would the board be amenable to scheduling a special meeting the week of August seventh? I know we still need comments. From the county planning department on to continue this conversation. And maybe just to focus being on just the initial screening, what's gonna happen, and then go come back.
Can we get back to you on that? Cause I really don't know. Summer is extremely hard to get.
I have to ask the question.
I don't, and I have to give you an answer, and that was the best one I could come up with.
We get a special meeting like first week of August?
For you?
For planning board. Uh for me then.
Okay, yeah.
There you go.
Well, yeah, uh we'll have to, not the first, we don't, I don't have time to notice. Right, uh. It doesn't have to be on a Thursday. Special meeting. Yeah, yeah, that that has always been the way. There's no mailing. The way the paper works, it's a week, because it's a weekly paper. Yes, I'll I'll look into it.
October fifth, then.
Well, because you got people in here who want to know and tell.
November? It's possible the ninth. No, ZB is tenth. That's a Wednesday night, uh I'd have to check with the clerk, but you know, we could. If I have to, I could find a special place to do it, uh if it if it can't be here.
And how's the rest of the board to this, because I I.
What is the meeting for?
It would be continuation of of a hearing and hopefully getting a resolution based on the initial things. Things is wide option. Talk about options there.
Yeah, so um I mean. Honestly, I think the earliest uh that thi- that this room would be open is probably the either the eighth of the night, which is a Tuesday or a Wednesday. But I have to check with the clerk. They reserve the room. Uh sorry, it uh it'll be the seventeenth. And and the and the twenty fourth.
Well, I guess that you can, can we adjourn it on the seventeenth workshop night?
Well, you mean, not have a special meeting and and readjourn on the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we would do, right? So we would just, yeah, the public hearing is open, so we'll just leave it open and.
Alright, so throw that out the window, we're gonna be meeting on the seventeenth.
With Franco one, um Franco.
You can start the meeting with him, I don't care. Okay, hopefully that helps. Yeah.
Great.
But a public meeting is still open, um. And obviously, on the seventeenth of workshop meeting, everyone will be invited to come back and speak on or behalf. Or against the project.
And that is on August the seventeenth at five thirty in this room.
Five thirty in this room.
Okay, alright.
In the interim, what would you have staff do with the applicant in terms of?
I I would still say try and try and pull this together a little better based on what he's gonna offer us. What our suggestions are as far as phasing, they've given us the phasing map, you have A, B, C, D, A, B, and F. I'd like to stay in tune with those with each time coming before us to go and say, okay, how much further can we go? That's the goal.
Flesh that out in a drop at location.
Yeah.
For A.
Oh, great, right.
Right, so it would be for an overall potentials, overall site plan approval. Um and then uh the site work on A.
And then we just have to figure out conditions that'll make sure that they come back for. Future phase or and allow the board to impose appropriate conditions to require. Stop at a certain point.
That is the utmost importance that we're trying to say.
That's good, you're right.
Okay, good, thank you, Tom. Thank you, Josh. Next, on the uh under public hearings, we have. One eighty South Street is pushed to August, if they're not here tonight.
They are, uh they are, no, they are not, they have a religious um call day, where they prefer no business. Be transacted on their on their behalf. The public hearing is still.
Okay, so we can ask anyone from the public to speak on.
Oh, here, Amy.
Owns the job or against the project?
No.
Is there anyone from the public?
Okay, mic's over there, if you want to.
Come right up here and grab the microphone, sir, say your name. If you don't mind, turn the microphone on, we guys. Just press the button. In the microphone, he said it's not on. Okay, uh so you can state your name so the public knows who you are.
My name is Charles in New York, I live at two ten South Street in New York. And I'm ordering the one eighty uh South Street property. Um my concern is uh the new plans that have come forward, and I'm worried about the way. They look at things from the drug, the drainage, I mean, from the west side of the street. Underneath the road, they located the pipe. Uh and hopefully they have seen that and they will address it, but on the new plans, it's not addressed, it's. It's not any, not exist, well, it exists, and I'm concerned if they they. And they break the pipe, they even said that's not gonna happen, and it'll be fine.
No, no, that's not what I said. I said if they break it, we're gonna make them fix it, and Andy Learn's gonna help me.
I didn't want to make it too.
Yeah.
So I basically, the town has been very good, and I just wanted to know. Last storm, it was quite evident that the floodway that's there exists and um. If you put four foot of pill, as the new plan shows, in to that area, that's gonna act like a dam. And restrict the flow of the water that's coming out, and we already had water going down. You you guys know, I see, okay, that's enough time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wants to speak on the handling project or against it? Anyone on the room? Okay. Public hearing is still open. Next on the agenda is um, maybe I should ask, does staff have anything on it? So we're gonna push this public uh hearing on to the twenty fourth of August. Okay, next on the agenda is Capino's food. Um it's amended site plans, the public hearing's been open since two and twenty second, is there anyone here to speak on? The project or against it?
Yeah.
The applicants here?
No. No, I think this is another part.
Yeah, this is also gonna be moved to August twenty fourth, then our regular meeting. And then our goal, then we have the uh public hearing for David. Surveying on fifty four Bellevue Road, that was the short term rentals, which. I believe, do we have a public hearing open on that? Was it open? It was, right?
It wasn't.
And is there anyone here tonight looking to speak on? Come right up here and speak against it or for the project, state your name, sir.
Right, is Mark in or are you? I'm Dave, and Linda's the next door neighbor at one fifty three. We've lived at our house since two thousand and um. We built a house here, it's on the end of a flag lot. I don't know if you're familiar with it, in my, in my wife and I sat in the lake before that. And that's like the road that acts as our properties there is a private road. And we've had um a previous owner of the house that Dave owned now. Um went ahead and had a bed and breakfast there, the Airbnb, and they kind of did it under the radar. And it it uh kind of violated our privacy, as we said. And there were numerous occasions of, I don't know, kind of loud partying, and I, people just kind of wandering around on up our driveway and just. It's like we have a very private place, and we'd like to maintain that. We were an excellent relationship with Dave, we liked him very much, and our understanding that Dave wants. Uh kind of a short term, um something of a short duration. Uh ability to to rent his place for short term rentals. And um we've discussed this with him and under, we've discussed certain conditions that. We would like to see that, for example, um we would want. Uh somebody, either he or somebody representing him to be on site at all times, so that it wouldn't become just like, uh you know, typical. Airbnb where strangers are arriving at all hours, but I, you know, taxi cabs from the emergency train station. Late Friday afternoon, uh you know, unusual cars and whatnot, you know, it's a very private setting that we have, and and we'd like to. Preserve that as much as possible, and we discussed this with Dave, and we we have, you know. We, I think we've come up with a pretty good agreement, but I would like to just make sure that whatever kind of uh ruling. Is uh brought forth regardless, uh that there that conditions be met, that for example, that it doesn't uh. Just go uh like like a lot of Airbnb is where, you know, twenty cars show up and there's nobody. Who owns a place who's sort of uh supervised in situation. So that's.
And as we we go through a checklist, just say you're aware to, we have a checklist of the items that we're concerned with for all these properties. And um and there's a limit on the amount of cars that would be here in the property, there, we can't restrict when people come, that we can't do. Uh and how to get there, that's way beyond our control. So but again, as far as the items you're concerned with, before there were no rules to an S D R. Now there's a law that's implied that we have to follow, and the applicant has to follow the law that's written. So and most of your concerns are addressed in those, in 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 that law. So again, we can't say to what was the past, or what we can ask for is hopefully the gentleman does. What's required of him by the law, and if not, there's anybody that would complain, um you know, we have that evaluation. At the next time he's trying to um update his license for the next year or whatever it'll be, then we can bring forth any complaints. That have been issued or or whatever, and we can hold them to that.
What is the duration of the apartment?
Uh two years?
Two, two years that you give, uh and then one year.
One year after.
One year after with our inspections every year.
Right.
Right? Every two years, Scott. I'm sorry. Every, it's it's a two year permit.
So it's a two year permit.
Can I jump in real quick?
I'm sorry, who is this?
Uh Dave Serbini, I'm his neighbor. Great, how you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
I think Mark would be concerned if we wound up selling the house, that permit does not stay with the property, it stays with the owner, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
So if I if I wound up selling the house, which I don't plan to do. Um but it would be, the 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 permit wouldn't be extended to.
Okay, that's good to know, but a public precedent will have been set. In other words.
No, so uh the way the law works, um that because it's an allowed use by a legislative act. The precedent is the allowed use, the legislative act creates the. Legal use of a property for a short term rental via the special use permit. Um just because he gets one, doesn't automatically mean the next person gets one, it's all based on the application. Uh that the next person might submit. Um, just because he gets one, doesn't automatically mean the next person gets one, it's all based on the application, um, that the next person might submit. Um, so there's no, you know, the non-transferability is, doesn't, doesn't mean that the next person who moves into that property. Automatically gets a short term rent, they still have to go through the process.
So, so I think, Mark, if you had a, an issue with the next people, hypothetically, if somebody else bought the house. And you and the neighbors decided that they're buying it just for doing an Airbnb. You could come before the board and all, you know, uh. Air your concerns, and maybe the board won't approve, but based upon the conversations that you and I have had. Uh, I think that we have a pretty good agreement on, on at least our situation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know a lot of your situation, and, um. And that's our understanding that. This is kind of a temporary, uh, need that you're trying to fill, is that correct?
Yes.
So, uh, I, I'm anticipating that if, if, if you get a two year, uh, permit to. To have an SDR, you probably won't need to use it for the entire duration of the permit, right?
Correct.
Is that?
Yes.
Right.
Great, happy.
Okay, um.
Paul, go ahead, wait up.
I just wanted to comment, cause you talked about having someone on premises.
Yes.
Okay, and the zoning code requires that if the property owner's not on premises. Then, or, or does not reside within thirty miles of the town of Lloyd. Then they must designate a local manager as an agent. So, you know, if, if David is not gonna be around, then yes, to designate somebody. Who's the agent that can be contacted to come if there's any complaints. Whatever.
I, I understand.
Whatever you do with him, if you guys agree to something different, that would be between you, but that's what our zoning code provides. Okay?
But they don't have to live there. Yeah, but they don't have to be on site. They, they could, uh, have access to the zoning, uh, here, so he basically is, uh.
Are you guys heard a chat?
As a, as a next door neighbor. There you go.
There you go, so now you solved your problem, your question, and you gotta draw that.
Well, I, I just wanted to, uh. Just air my.
Absolutely, right, perfect.
I, I don't know how many applications for SDRs, the, the orders, it's the zoning board.
Plan board, yeah, we've seen a few since the law went into effect.
There are a lot of, uh, Airbnbs in our neighborhoods.
No, that's what we're calling, we need SDRs.
That's weird, yeah, well.
We'll catch up.
As a card.
Yep.
The one thing, um, just, and I've talked about this with Mark. As I know the situation with the previous owners and some of the problems that they had with them. And I've also seen the Airbnbs on our block. And I don't want my house to be that, because I, we live in a little beautiful natural cul-de-sac, um, and. Uh, I wanna be respectful of my other neighbors, and I don't want it to, and I, I actually told Mark this. Um, I'm not sure if the board has copy of it, but I, I added to the house rules. To try and overcompensate for Mark and his wife's concerns about what happened in the past, as far as. Limiting the number of people that are on the property, limiting the number of cars, the, uh, the speed at which they can drive on the shared road, uh, amplified sound. Uh, all that to try and make sure that none of that happens again to them, and to the other neighbor.
Also, we request, make sure you have a large enough sign out there to say wh- what your address is, so nobody goes onto his property. And the border, um, I would say property line understanding also, so that people didn't drift off into someone else's property.
Yep, I actually have, um, but when the fire inspector came, um, I said, I showed her all the, the charts that we have by the front door. It outlines the property also in the rules, uh, that they can't go close to the property lines, like. I have, um, purposely defined an area where people can walk. With the idea of keeping them away from the neighbors, we have three point seven acres, so it's a pretty big property. But we're closer to Mark and Linda than we are to most of the other neighbors. So, uh, again, when I put together the house rules, uh, in keeping in mind the problems that they had before. I addressed that with whoever would be staying there, of their limitations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Tell Linda I said hello.
You tell Linda I said hello.
I will.
I will. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I will, um, anyone else from the public? Any none, I have a motion to close public hearing. Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing closed. You're up, sir.
But just read the resolve clause in.
If you could just, in the whereas, you have number ten for the amount of guests for that property?
It's six.
Yeah.
It's, it was. Those three bedrooms.
It's three bedrooms. And then there was also one that said six, cause the amount of bedrooms, there's only four bedrooms.
So we have what they know.
David, are you still on, David?
Yes, yes.
Dave, we see, um, I believe you only have three bedrooms, am I right?
Three legal bedrooms, yes.
Well, what do you have, any legal bedroom?
Well, I don't know, would you call it, they call it the storage room in the basement.
All right. Nobody's sleeping in that.
So we, we put the kids in there, uh, to take a nap, uh, but it's not a, it's not a.
Hey, hey, we're gonna end up pushing you off to the next month, and I just saw the little guy, why don't you put him in the basement? But it's a six, um, a three bedroom home, and people are not permitted to sleep in a closet in the basement.
Okay.
So we're only allowing six people to stay there at a time.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, we got it, yeah, we got it.
Maximum of six.
Gonna have to call CPS, buddy?
Okay, you're up, Paul.
Okay, so this is, uh, application for a short term rental. And we want zoning code at fifteen, one thirty one Bellevue Road. Uh, maximum occupancy of six. Yes. And, uh, this is a type two seeker action, uh, no need for referral to the county planning board. Uh, be it further, uh, whereas planning board held public hearing, the application of the project is required. Uh, the board considered all public comments after hearing will close public hearing on July twenty seventh. Uh, be it resolved pursuant to the SDR regulations and New York State Town Law, the planning board chairman. Is hereby authorized to sign the special use permit, proven use of the property at one thirty one Bellevue Road. For a short term rental with a maximum, maximum, maximum occupancy of six, yes, to stay. On satisfaction of the following conditions. Uh, payment of any fees, uh, made prior to operation, including but not limited recreation and last care fees. Being further resolved that after it is signed by the planning board chairman, special use permit shall remain in effect for two years. May be renewed pursuant to the zoning code by issuance of an SDR permit by a current enforcement officer. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is involved by a court of competent jurisdiction, remainder shall, uh, begin in full course of effect. Be a further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the office to the town, Hillary County clerk. And a copy shall be mailed to the applicant within the twenty five day period. And be a further resolved that through the prosecution, I'll make it back immediately.
I have a motion to accept the resolution?
No.
Thank you, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? The none, the resolution passed. I would make one recommendation on the next time we do this, we see where it said two years, it says the planning board chairman will issue, I'm sorry. Time the planning board chairman, the special use permit shall remain in effect for two year or unless sold. Can we do that?
We, we can add another, uh, resolve clause.
Yeah, because I. Yeah, because we have just had that question, and I think it would just, yeah.
It's actually occurring right now, you remember one fifty one?
Yes.
One forty eight.
One forty eight, thank you.
Oh, I remembered one fifty one, so clearly, cause it was here, I don't remember.
They're se- they're selling.
They're selling.
Yeah, and the lawyer called today and asked about transferability, and we said no.
Okay, good. Just, so it was a catch, so we might wanna make sure we do that on the next. Or, no question, anyone?
What? Yeah, good, that's, that's better, good.
And now Mr. Gerantine is on, and, um.
Motion to adjourn?
This is, uh. I, again, the subdivision was given previously, free. Uh, it's silver, silver gardens.
Yeah.
Part of the city planner review, um, minor, uh, two odd subdivision, I guess. Um, including a proposal to delegate, dedicate, uh, point oh nine acres of land to the town of Lloyd. For improvements associated with arch and drive. Uh, this will, uh, as part of the great site planner review for a fifty seven minute apartment complex on lot one of the two lot. Um, under New York State Town Law, the planning board has authority to extend the. Conditional approval of the subdivision for ninety days pursuant to New York State, uh, Town Law two seventy six seventeen. Um, the decision to extend is a type two action under seeker, because it does not entail any change. When you approve subdivision or the approval conditions. Um, and whereas planning board is willing to grant the requested ninety day extension. Now therefore be resolved pursuant to New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby extends. The conditional subdivision approval for the occupancy subdivision plat. Um, and this is a plat, uh, prepared by Colliers, dated February twelfth, two thousand twenty one, last revised. Uh, June twenty second, two thousand twenty one, that's the approved plat. Uh, for ninety days from the effective date of this resolution. Be a further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations, planning board chairman's authorized to sign the approved plat. Upon satisfaction of the following conditions. Fully executed agreement between the occupant and the town, uh, in respect to performance, security for construction, reinstallation, the road improvement, sidewalks, stormwater control facilities. And landscaping for the project, and for payment of the occupant's share of public infrastructure necessary to serve the project. And all applicable town of Lloyd fees, including but not limited to escrow and, um. Recreational fees. For some reason, I'm not gonna say it. Uh, a formal offer of extension to the town of Lloyd by the occupant of the point oh nine acre. portion of the lands involved in the subdivision for improvement, search and drive. Approval of all required, it's been shown on the approved plat by the town of Lloyd, town attorney as proven in substance. Upon completion requirements of a conditional approval, the chairman shall sign the approved plat. Thereby certifying it as final. Uh, be a further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall report the approved plat. Together with all approved easements shown on the plat, with the Ulster County Clerk's office in ninety, within ninety days. After it's signed by the planning board chairman, it shall be known void. Be a further resolved that six copies of the plat, showing the endorsement of the Ulster County clerk. Shall be obtained and transmitted to the town clerk within thirty days of the date of filing. For distribution of the planning board, tax assessor, town's authorized inspector, town code enforcement act, it's sort of. Be a further resolved that if any part of the resolution was involved by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this resolution shall remain in full course of effect. And that, uh, within five days of the effective date of this resolution, copy shall be filed in the clerk's office. And shall be mailed to the applicant within the same period. Uh, be a further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I have a motion to accept the resolution, red. Well, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Your post? Um, so there's one opposed, any extensions, so. So, thank you. Okay, so that, uh, resolution is passed. Okay, and now last but not least, we have Mr. De Lorenzo up.
Oh, we got that still?
Do you guys like your permit? Thank you, Carl.
Yep.
Good call. So this is a, um. Special use permit. Um, application and kind was circulated to the board. Um, who's here to speak on behalf of the project?
Uh, Dave Bart, I'm the county director of the town, with, thank you, Dave. There it is. It's in the basement. Um, they then actually used, uh, had, used to have a door in it, uh, we asked them to remove that. For lighting ventilation engines, uh, and mercy, US kitchens. And then now has an arch for the net and the great room. Um, will probably be embedded in there, but, uh, because it's open to the great room, now we can borrow, uh, lighting ventilation. Um, you know, also have access to the music escape and rest few pieces facility. Um, uh, this is actually more or less already in place, uh, they had a summer kitchen in basements, um, for many years. Uh, if you know the house, it's all electric, and, you know, it was open time when. That was sort of the thing, which means the insulation is, is great, so upstairs is hot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, so that's that, the entry is in the rear of the building. Um, there's a door at the top of the stairs that'll be locked and separate. Um, and the, uh, the user of this space, uh, will enter that, that space and make a, uh, another quick, uh, right hand turn into the apartment. Uh, he's doing this, um, just so you all know, uh, as part of the attempt to sell the house, um, as it has become, uh, too much for him, after passing.
Uh, has this been, you, are, are you seeing it?
Oh, no, never. He is not, uh, he is not, his intent is to sell it, uh, you know, add value by this, and then sell it, sell it, and then. The next guy wants to, he'll come in and loot, do it, loot at these ones. Okay, anybody else?
Nothing blowing hot, hot air?
No, it's you.
I am dying. I don't know, I heard they were wanting hot air. Right? It's all the way down. Yeah, it's not working.
One of the, one of the broken, do you? That's off my floor.
So, any question? No, so we will just do a public hearing, all the guys, for August twenty fourth, is that within time?
Twenty twenty five, yeah.
Yeah? Okay, all favor that?
Aye.
Thank you. See you, love. I did hear the motion, second.
Okay, go ahead, Eric.
Okay, all favor? Uh, there we go. Okay, there we are. Very good, too, this is about it, this is. Hold on a second, we're not adjourning, it's still in the air. By the last meeting, we, we were doing. And it was like Charlie, the dad, the chop head, your tree was doing the U-Haul, he wasn't like the bad stuff. After the draft, so my guy drove by, you can see, no U-Hauls, somebody must have got.
The sign came down, and you. After the sign came down, there were a couple of U-Hauls there. I don't know that either, I don't know that. But the people were bringing trucks back there, but they were being moved by the next.
Yeah, he, uh, he actually broke the contract with them, uh, after I reached out to him, um, he was super cool with it. Uh, and now actually, uh, he's got some of the plants, some nice trees out of the edge of the driveway, uh, uh, out of the edge of the, uh, parking lot, I think that was fantastic.
Yeah, I have to say, and, and a couple of different projects that we've looked at over the time, I'd say one eighty. South Street, they have done an exemplary job of cleaning that up after we read them the ride.
Well, yeah, we sort of threatened it a little bit.
The other project is the one on Wood, Wood Drive down here.
Yeah, uh, Woodside Place.
Woodside Place.
The trees.
The vines, the con or whatever type of trees, and it's been checking me for a while, that these trees would be asked to be put in for privacy. Uh, they actually replanted new trees, so it was kind of cool. So the other thing would be Dave on, they've got pallets outside that building too, and it was surrounded with shrines. Don't grab the papinos then, because I'm, I'm gonna read them the ride. Don't grab Papino's then, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna read them the riot act. Well, the back of that property was.
Since they're not here tonight. Since they're not here tonight, that was one of our concerns.
I'm gonna light them up.
Yeah, so if they're here next month, they're gonna have.
No, they won't be there in a month's time. They won't be there in a month's time, I guarantee it.
Okay, you got me. Well, do your thing, that's what you're supposed to do. Appreciate it. Um, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All there.
Feel better, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.